Let me find my email first.
Guys, the whole gang's here.
I know.
It's been a while.
It's been a while.
So, um, so Louis, you'd not be voting today, right?
Hey, hello, is that?
Yep, you're also.
Pledge first. Let's pledge first.
Call the meeting to order.
Let's call this meeting to order. Thanks for coming, everyone. It's a few of you.
We'll start with the pledge.
Hey, let's start with the pledge.
If you'll follow me in the pledge of allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And I will go ahead and say the prayer. Our kind and gracious Father in heaven, we're grateful to meet together tonight as a community and as a planning commission to discuss the affairs of Mapleton City. We're grateful for the fortunate circumstances that we find ourselves and we recognize how blessed we are. We pray that, as we discuss tonight, that we can have a spirit of harmony one within one another and that we can seek a resolution that is best for the whole of the city. We're grateful for the many efforts that have gone into this point for staff and for the time that they put into preparing the agendas and for the participation of the community. And we pray that we can come to an agreement tonight that is uplifting for all. We love you so much and we are so grateful again for all that we have and these things we say in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Do you want to say anything or do you want me just to go right?
Nope, you're good. Go ahead and start with the consent agenda.
All right. I will entertain a motion to accept the and approve the consent agenda.
Rich, Louis, so moved.
Any discussion?
Second then.
Or second then any discussion? Second?
Yeah.
Okay. All good, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It was a pretty easy one last time.
You're good, Amy, thanks.
Okay, that was easy.
That takes us to item three.
Amy, did you want to say anything? Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, that was easy for you. Okay. Next item, let's move down the line. Is item three on the consent agenda too?
Public hearing item, no.
Oh, that's the public, okay. Okay, so, item three, consideration of request to rezone 1.6 acre parcel located at 739 South 800 West from A2 to RA1 with a transferable development right receiving site overlay TDR. Okay, Sean.
Thank you Chair, members of the commission. So, as you said, the project site's about 1.6 acres. It's in the A2 zone. It's developed with a single-family dwelling. The applicant's requesting to rezone it from A2 to RA1 and then apply that TDR overlay with the intent of creating one additional building lot on the site. This is just a view of the project. The, this is on the corner of 8th South and 8th West. This is the proposed concept plan. So if the rezone gets approved by the city council, then they would submit for their subdivision application, which would come back to this body. This is the existing zoning. So you see the subject property there in green. Everything to the west of it is already zoned RA1 and a little bit to the south. As you look at the general plan, the majority of the area surrounding it, including the parcel, is designated for low-density residential, which is the RA1 zone which they're proposing. We also included this in your packet that shows all the project sites that have already been approved as receiving sites. And so based on all of those factors being consistent with the general plan and the TDR ordinance and the surrounding development, staff's recommendation is that you make a recommendation of approval to the city council.
This is not a public hearing.
It is.
It is a public hearing, okay.
And applicants are here, so.
Okay, okay. Well, does anyone have any questions?
Sean, can you go back to the aerial? This isn't pertaining to this project in particular, but the one just to the north, that long shotgun house?
Uh huh.
Is that a part of a future plan? But that's already been?
That's an old property that's just a legal non-conforming lot.
Okay.
So it'll probably exist like that for?
It just look, yeah, because it looks like they're running out of options to do anything with that if?
Yeah, because it's so narrow, they're really, you couldn't subdivide it back there.
Yeah.
It's just going to be what it is, I think.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Pretty straightforward with, to, we would like to invite the owner to come on up. Tell us if you want any, to want to say anything and if not?
I'm pretty well covered. I'm Jay Black with Subtle Solutions Group. I represent the owner and applicant.
Okay.
He described it pretty well. I don't think there's anything to add to it. And we appreciate your consideration and time. Questions?
Assuming just seeing another single-family dwelling? Okay. Yeah, pretty straightforward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Awesome. Is anyone here for the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And anything else?
Quick question. Does this require installation of curb gutter sidewalk?
It will, yeah.
Okay.
Will you go to that aerial? Was that what, it was annotated with the blue?
This one? Yeah, so that's the right-of-way area.
What is the minimum for curb gutter sidewalk? Like, is there a minimum street width that we have, that they have to hear by?
It's based on the street they're on and the transportation plan.
Okay.
So in this case, they'll just match. You can see what's across the street. They'll just match that line.
Okay. Okay.
I remember when this was for sale. I tried to sell it. It was a good opportunity for someone to do this. Okay.
Well, with this one being pretty straightforward, I'll motion to approve the, this is a rezone. Yeah, to approve the rezone as it's currently presented.
And?
With the TDR.
With the TDR overlay, yes.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thanks for coming. Thank you. It's a great house, I love that house. Good job. Are you guys going to build on the lot or keep, stay in the house? That's good. Awesome. Yes. Good job. That's awesome. Good. Thank you. Okay, item number four. Consideration of a request to amend Mapleton City code, sections 18.64 and 18.78C and review of updated concept plans for the Harmony Ridge project consisting of approximately 990 residential units and at least 50 acres of commercial located in the planned development PD3 zone. Okay, Sean.
Okay, thank you Chair, members of the commission. This is a little bit larger than the last one we reviewed. We've been hearing about this project for a long time, right? Some, I don't, I don't think anyone on the commission was here when they, when it first went through the city process, right? So the, the project's about 460 acres. It was originally part of Spanish Fork City and the communities and the property owner at the time came together and said it just makes a lot more sense to have this in Mapleton City. And so in 2011, it was, there was a boundary adjustment that brought it into Mapleton City limits. And at the time, a development agreement was approved as well as the PD1 zone for the project. And it outlined potential for 850 residential units, about 60 acres of industrial and about 15 acres of commercial. The development agreement indicated that the developer would build three city parks and then those would be dedicated to the city. And there were specific amenities that were required as part of those parks. There was a trails plan and a requirement for a certain percentage of the site to be maintained as open space. And just to note, you'll, in the staff report, we addressed it, but the project of Butts, that 30 acre parcel that we recently picked up, that was part of the Mapleton Village project to the north that we plan on developing a bike park. And this is part of our, our trails master plan that we're working on right now. So this is the project site. If you look on the back screen, this is Highway 6 and then Highway 89. And so it's all of the area in red here. This was the original concept plan that was in the, in the development agreement as it, as it stands right now. So if you, again, if you look on the back screen, all of this gray area was industrial. That was one of the concerns that I've had since I've been at the city is that this is going to be essentially a gateway into the city and we were going to have this large industrial area. So that was, when Edge came to us, that was one of the things we really wanted to focus on as part of potential amendments. Another thing we talked about in the staff report is right here is the city's Parkway Trail. If you've been to the end, it ends at this point. The original plan had Edge, or the property owners dedicating an easement to the city to run it along Highway 6 and then under, there's an old railroad spur that goes here and then into Spanish Fork. That obviously is not an ideal alignment with the traffic along Highway 6 and commercial and industrial traffic coming into the site. So that was another thing that we really wanted to work on with, with the new property owner. The third was the, the city parks. The parks, as they were envisioned in the development agreement, were kind of a typical old-school park of pavilions and basketball courts and really not a lot of amenities that would, that would really bring a lot of benefit to Mapleton City as a whole. And so that was another key point that we wanted to, to discuss as, as this project moved forward. And so when Edge came to us, they were interested in seeing if there was the ability to add density. And so that allowed us both to come to the table and say, okay, how can we make this work for both parties? And so that's what we've, we've been doing. They've been, they've been very good partners to hear the city side and, and, and to work with us on, on some of the things we wanted to see improved. So the proposal is to increase the density, but they are eliminating the industrial areas. So some of that density will go in those areas that were industrial and then the remainder area will be commercial. So we're increasing the commercial potential for that site as well. We've eliminated the city parks and instead, they are going to donate a pretty substantial amount that we can then use to develop the bike park. It will also include other amenities other than the bike park. So we think this is a significant benefit to the city to get something that we think is, is more of a, a community-wide asset. We've worked on improved trails alignments. They're offering to dedicate a 30 acre parcel that sits up kind of high on the hill. This will result in increased development fees. They are providing two HOA parks so that their, members of their community will still have park space in addition to the 30 acre park. And so the PD1 text amendments that are in the packet are really just to address the changes and to update it to suit our current needs. Edge is going to do a little presentation on the plan, but this is the, this is the proposed concept plan. If you look to the back again, you'll see you've got your high-density area still where it was always proposed. This is an HOA park. And then all of the old industrial is now commercial and some residential. And then as you work your way up the hill, this is the single-family detached. You'll see here a trailhead parking area. And then this road leads directly into, so they will be developing the road that will provide access to the city to that 30 acre parcel. And then on the trails plan, what we've done is rerouted the city trail to come up to here and then behind along the hillside and then under into Spanish Fork City. So we think that'll be a significant improvement. They'll kind of hit on some of the amenities they're proposing in their parks. We included in the staff report some of the general plan goals and policies. We can go through these if you have any questions. But, you know, encouraging conservation subdivisions that cluster development and provide for open space, providing a wide range of housing options at various price points, encouraging a diverse amount of commercial, those types of things that we feel like this, this plan is, is consistent with. So staff's recommendation is to recommend approval to the city council. We kind of ran through several reasons why we're supportive of this in the staff report that are outlined here that we can talk about in more detail if, if you have any questions on those. If you don't have any questions for me right now, we could turn it over to the applicant. They could go through their presentation and then we could?
I have a question. I have a couple of questions. I don't love the idea of the HOA parks, per se, in the middle of our community. The exclusivity of it. And I, I understand that we're trading 30 acres that will be accessible by the general community, but, I don't know, I just don't love the HOA parks.
Yeah, the benefit, the benefit of the, of the HOA parks in this case is that the city has no responsibility for the expenses, right? And they can provide these amenities so that their residents have a place to recreate without, without it being a drain on city resources.
What does the geotech say about the old power plant? Isn't this the?
Yep, so they've been, there's been reclamation work going on for years. There's still some groundwater pumping requirements that are taking place that we think will probably be done in the next year or two. The applicants may be able to speak to that a little bit more. They've done extensive geotech work to ensure that where we're, where we're locating the development is in areas that are, that are safe to do so. And there's, the, the site's been heavily mapped and analyzed and it'll, will ensure that, that the areas that are being built are safe.
Just one quick question. Let me scroll to the top. When, at the beginning, it says we want to amend, and I didn't think to ask you about this other day, but is that just referring to the actual zone for this?
Yes.
For this development?
Correct.
We're not changing anything for the citywide, anything citywide?
Correct. The PD1 has a zoning text specifically for this development. So when we're changing density and we're changing park requirements and things like that, it just has a ripple effect that you then have to update the code to make sure that everything's consistent.
Okay, so the 18.64 and 18.78C are just this?
Correct.
Okay.
I, I just, going back to the HOA parks, so is there any requirement that the city will put on the developers to make sure that those are completed? I bring up that question because I know there's been cases with the city in the past where a developer said they were going to build an HOA park. They never did it and then it became a, an issue.
Yeah, a lot of the challenges with, with the ones we've had in the city were on very, very small developments where you got, you know, five to 10 people that are trying to pay for these type of amenities where in this case, it's such a large project, we aren't too concerned about that, but it is part of the development agreement that's in place. So, yes, it'll be.
I have a question on the commercial. So this is part of a planned development, correct?
Uh huh.
So does the commercial still have to fall under the commercial design guidelines that we set as a city?
Yeah, what we did is, in the PD1 text, it outlined a whole bunch of requirements that were different than our, our code. So what we did is we struck all that and then just indicated that they will just follow the, the general commercial standards and those design standards, yep.
Sean, can you go back to the slide that shows what is already approved of like the density and the makeup of it?
Yep, that's this.
What is the density?
So this was the 850.
Okay, so 850 is already approved?
Yep.
Okay.
And we're going to 990?
990.
So 140 more?
And this is 2011, when this?
Yeah, and I pointed out in the staff report, one of the things is because there's still so much open space on the site, it's still less than three units per acre. So it's, while there's certainly is high-density areas, this is the model of a cluster development, right? You develop, you, you, you cluster the development that allows for open space and other amenities.
The open space on it is undevelopable. I mean, it's steep hillside.
Yep, some of it is.
You weren't on planning commission then, were you?
I was on planning commission then.
You were?
Your first round.
It was my first round, yeah.
To that point, it was 40% open space on the new plan. What's the percent open space?
It stays.
It stays the same.
It's just clustered.
Yep.
One thing, maybe they will make mention of this, but Sean mentioned to me that some of those lots that are, should I wait, should we let them talk about this? That they'll be single level?
Yeah, one of the things we addressed too is there's, there's several lots that will be kind of on the bluff edge on that southern end. And so one of the things we worked with them to do is to, to change the design standards to ensure that those stay single level so that you're not getting the big two, three-story facades hanging off the side of the, of the hill. So we, we think that's a benefit as well.
Where does the, man, we're, we're just rapid fire here. You're on your game tonight. Where does the 30 acre bike park reside in comparison to the TDRs that we have? Are they close in proximity?
Yeah, so if you look at this map here, this is the 30 acre parcel.
Okay.
And there will be trail connections. Our, our trail runs here and then we will have, our trails plan will have connections right through here.
Okay, so it's not?
Up onto the bench and then as well as Mapleton Village has some trails here, so.
Okay.
Yes, it'll all be interconnected. So you could get on a bike at Maple Canyon, ride all the way to this bike park here.
Okay.
Is the vision.
What are the access points? I know you said there, it's going to come up and like up the road and around to get to it through this subdivision. Is there access to that park from the north as well?
So this, this road extends through to the north into Mapleton Village.
Yeah, okay. So there'll be a couple accesses.
And where's the railroad spur again? Will you?
Uh, it's, it's right where this trail line shows.
Oh, okay.
If you drive out there, you can, it's, unless you're looking for it, you'd never see it, but, so that's where we have the grant with Spanish Fork City to take the trail, hopefully under the railroad and then connect into Spanish Fork's trail system.
I'm sure Union Pacific's got to do a bunch of analysis on that.
They have not been all that accommodating, as you can imagine. So we're working on it.
They don't have other competing priorities. Okay.
Okay. Well, let's get the applicant up here.
Good evening, my name is Steve Maddox. I am one of the owners of Edge Homes, Gordy Jones. And I formed the company in 2008. Tonight, I have brought everybody that I know with me out of respect to planning commission and the rapid fire so that we do not have to say I don't know the answer to that. General counsel to my right is Paxton Guiman. His handler, Kelly, is also with us tonight. We have our civil design team with us all in-house. And then, uh, I want to thank Sean for life's lessons on the court and off the court. Presumptuously, we had approached the city with our idea of what Mapleton needed and what we thought was best during a very challenging time. And we were met with one of the kindest people that I have had the opportunity, I'm sorry. One of the kindest people that I have had in my career to work with and the example that he has been. This is one of the greatest jobs that I have on the entire earth, thinking that what we are doing is creating a community for future generations. We met with the environmental because I am not a developer, I'm a builder. And we move little kids into communities and we move families. And the responsibility of understanding the environmental was paramount to what we were trying to accomplish to make sure that generational, when I'm gone, that we have a safe community. So the open space that was asked about, we're actually at 47% open space. And we took what the environmentalists expressed to us and then we moved away from. And we created areas that children should be able to play on. We have worked diligently with everybody that is an expert in this field and created buffers and created no-water zones. And we have created a long-term impact plan that will allow this and everybody in Mapleton City from a water perspective to be able to sleep better than what the land lays at today. And that was our objective. And as we met with Sean, we realized that in 12 years since Mr. Lewis approved this, that the lifestyle changes, the city's maturity, the vision of what commercial would be and Highway 6 and what it used to be in Spanish Fork, compared to where it is today, certainly has changed. And so we went back to the drawing board to create connectivity, to create trail connectivity. I argued with Sean because I like spending money in our project. And so up until about an hour and a half ago, I was wanting to spend, and on his report, it says mil, that's actually million. That's not.
To be accurate.
That's not grain. That's not a mil rate, that is millions. And the, the ability for us to be able to move money into the community, for the community and by the community, Mr. Lewis, and to your point of it's not an HOA and there won't be fences that go up once a year so the general public can't. And then one of the objectives that the mayor had expressed to us is the burden of amenities. And we, as we began looking at the amenity packages, it became very abundant that we are on the outskirts of town and there are lovely parks within the community, but sometimes they are a burden to take your kids and get in the car and go to. So we tried to take 30 years of experience in our communities and move them here. So what you will see tonight is not an artist's rendition of what we hope to be able to create. This is what we have created in other communities. What you see tonight is an admission of some mistakes that we have made in our career with the ability to go back post-op and be able to analyze the usage. So the pool size, the deck size of pools, the pickleball courts, the trails, the usable trails for some mountain bikers that like to ride like I do and then mountain bikers that like to ride like my children ride. And we were able to take a literal canvas and take the guts that we had from the original and be able to cure those. So our goal tonight is to be unified with you. The team is here out of respect to you, as I indicated. If there are questions that I am not familiar with, I believe we can answer all. And rapid fire is fine and appreciated. And an interruption at any time is also appreciated because my memory isn't what it used to be. So if we need to pause and address, I would appreciate that. So if we can run through the slide deck, if you have it or?
Yeah, just advance the, to the right.
This is the overall layout. We realized that we had Highway 6. I have met with the gardener group on the commercial. Not knowing what we would have, we wanted to make sure that the commercial was developed appropriately and sustainable. And we will be working on the commercial portion as the residential portion gets going. Our goal as a company is to hopefully by year end begin moving dirt and begin working on the horizontal. A lot of work has been done over the course of the last 12 years on bringing utilities to and through the property. And we are appreciative of that. We also, as Sean indicated, remove the industrial portion of this and we'll fill that in with what we believe is appropriate product as a transition from commercial and the expectations of that particular client. These are homes that we build, that we will be building. And I believe that you had indicated that the bluff lots are going to be reduced through HOA restrictions and MDA to a one-level building so that the view shed that everybody enjoys today will be enjoyed in the future. These are just plans that we build. This is the town home product that we currently build, which is an alley load product along boulevards and then a front load product. Square footages are there, these are fairly significant in size. It's illegal for us to talk about price point, but it does take a fairly sizable income to afford housing. So we feel like we have these extraordinarily efficient and we spend as much money on the exterior of the homes as we do the interior of the home. The unit that's on the left on the town home is one that I have designed for my generation, which is a three-bedroom, main-level living town home for those that want the security of living next to neighbors and the livability of main level for a move-up from generational living. These are the condominiums that we have. These all have one garage attached to the unit. They are all main level. We have ADA compliance in here for the disabled. And then we have main level living for those that don't like stairs. And this is a generational building where we have individuals that are grandparents to first-time home buyers. This is the layout that Sean had showed earlier. We've kept zoning density, sorry, where they were on the original. We've enhanced, modified, and trying to incorporate the amenity package. There's not HOA amenity within the community that is not available to single-family residents and attached products. So the HOA will be one HOA maintained by and within our organization for the time being. And then we turn that over at some point with budgets. The budgets that we have set out and the amenities that we have set out are historical and current operational budgets that we are working with. This is a fun slide. 10-foot city master plan trail, 3,287 feet. 10-foot of city master plan trail, 5,000 feet. 8,000 pedestrian, 82, and public trail, 7,445. We debated whether these would be public, private. We've come to a resolution as to how we are handling the trail system, which will be that Mapleton City controls the easement through this, has control over long-term, short-term, rip-up, tear-out, modify, and not leave that with the homeowners. So these will be maintained by the city unless otherwise noted. And they should be an array of stroller pushers to the e-bike crowd that now exists. We will be requiring all helmets on individuals in these parks or in these trails. An additional layout on what we're doing and the connectivity in the bottom-left-hand corner of where the city park will be built. And then the brown above that park denotes the road that we will build, which will essentially be the frontage of the park. And the connectivity on the park is part of our phasing. There are individuals tonight that will get emotional looking at this park because they have spent more time figuring out this park. We have moved eyes, ears, and visibility onto the park for the safety of families. We have not hidden our parks, we have moved them into a prominent zone. There's a clubhouse, there's a gathering area, there's lots and lots of trails. Our community consists of as much zero escape as we can to be water-conscious. Maybe the new trend is to be Hawaii with all the snow that we have. We believe that drought will rear its head again at some point. So we will be using the zero escape in all areas that we can and moving away from turf. So some of the green that you see here will be modified as approvals are had and we get down to the landscaping. We are trying to put as much curvature in roads for traffic calming. Straight roads seem to force us all to be on our phone more and not pay attention. And then we want abutments within roads in these communities to slow traffic. And then we are moving people off of the quadrants as much as possible for safety. Again, just gathering areas for people to come and do nothing but read a book and listen to people away from the units but close enough and to be part of the community as communities used to be built. This is a very expensive park because of the amount of sidewalk curb and gutter that does not service lots. But we think that this is imperative to the livability of the community. This is the oversight. The plague of pickleball that exists amongst our society today will be incorporated into this park. We have watched the parks across the state. And here, as we've observed, that there is standing room only during certain periods of time. This should take some of the burden off of city parks. The pool area and the clubhouse. And we would hope that this is a super robust park, not only at the beginning of the project, but in perpetuity bringing a community together, which we think lacks in many of our communities today. The pickleball courts are removed from the homes. There are lawsuits going on across the nation for the noise. We have moved those away based on sound engineering and feel like those are far enough away and should be a very low maintenance for our HOA, keeping budgets down with tot lot within the middle. We have gone through and designed these for gathering areas of small groups and some large groups. In the minutes that we have presented, we have gone as granular to define the parks by manufacturer and serial number. We do not want to be known as somebody that presents really nice pictures and then we go to Home Depot and buy a wooden swing set that becomes dilapidated. So part of our crew and presentation tonight is to actually identify what we will be building, not just beautiful pictures, if those are beautiful. I actually don't think they're beautiful pictures, Brandon, but thank you. We, and maybe you guys do this, we have had more problems with dogs' business after eating than most communities. So we are DNA testing, and I know this, maybe you guys have heard this. We DNA test dogs as part of the HOA. If a dog does his business and it's picked up, we send that to a lab and then the homeowner is fined $200 on the first offense. And then that keeps our communities clean. It is, yeah. It has removed the argument of you that looks like a dog lover and you that looks like you might not be a dog lover. And it's just a call to the HOA and they do an analysis.
Denied.
He has a dog. He has a dog, I know he has.
Well, let's get the DNA done. And, and the dogs that, there are people that open up their door and let them run and they are in your front yard when you live in common area communities. This has removed that. And then we are vigilant with understanding that I think it's disproportionate now on how many people own a dog and sometimes multiple dogs. So again, this is just something that we have had in our communities that seems to have eliminated all arguments because the science speaks for itself. Whether you let your dog out or not, it got out. These are the pavilions in the shade, we try to do more of a soft scape. We orient these to work with the sun rather than against the sun. And I love the cloth because we can change from season to season and the metal is a little bit harsher. This is the clubhouse that we have built. We have designed these areas of gathering around. We will probably have less greenscape and go to more zero escape. There's a fine line between Arizona and Utah. And I think we move more towards that as water becomes less prevalent. The materials we use are wood in, in look only. They are hardy and they are materials that have longevity.
Can I ask a quick question about parks?
Please.
Can you tell me the lighting situation?
The lighting situation, yeah. We send to an engineer and we look for dusk to dawn. And we look for lights that environmentally shine down rather than up because we have residents that don't like their light in their eyes. We do not light pickleball courts. And we do not light, we do light our pool areas for emergency egress from the clubhouse, but not for swimming. Pools are closed at dark and we let the season dictate what time that is. It, within the community, there'll be private lights. Along the trail corridor, we will do solar. I don't think they need to be lit all night. We are absolutely cognizant of the safety effect of having trails that are behind. So as you look at our trail corridors, they are in plain sight where we would hope that people can enjoy an element of beauty, but also an element of safety. Does that answer your question? Okay, thank you. Oversight, parking. We would hope that this particular park and clubhouse will allow people to walk to. So we want to promote a walkable, bikable community. Our clubhouses are used for and reservation for whatever events are happening on Saturday and Sunday. And it is very interesting in our communities, even with single-family. Sometimes the homes don't accommodate 40 or 50 people in our clubhouses. Allow people to be able to reserve these for two-hour blocks. Inside, we don't do cooktops. We do microwaves and we do warming stations and we do refrigerators with gathering areas. We have workout facilities. There's no representatives from Bossa here tonight, so we will probably make a real dent in their revenue stream. These are 24/7 key fobs so people have the convenience of coming home or not being able to sleep at night and use these. And these are photo cell lit at night.
Do you want to take item number five too?
Item number five, as you can see, we have a consideration. So we have a lot of legal that Sean and Paxton have worked on and feel as if we have bullet pointed everything that we need to bullet point. The product that we are building is product that we have built currently. The condominiums that we are proposing are sprinkled on the interior. They meet the fire requirements of the fire code and are probably the safest buildings that are built residentially because of the component of direct connectivity to a fire station and also sprinkled. Our town homes are, in our opinion, a move-up town home with vaulted product. And our amenities that we have laid out in our minds are strategically placed on land that we believe is accessible to the single-family town home. Our objective is to bring communities together with product lines and product types and a diversity of individuals. There are grants from the state that the legislature just passed that I think will give our community an incredible option to be able to have people that currently don't qualify for homes be able to qualify and use state funds to be able to procure their first home. So if there are questions and you would like to start firing away, I'd be more than happy to sit down and say thank you.
Steve, thanks for that.
Thank you.
It's good to see you. And it's great to have Edge Homes back in the south end of the valley.
Well, my partner lives, as you know, in Salem. Grew up in Payson and he's been mad at me for a long time, so it is great.
It's time.
Thank you.
How long do you think this is going to take for you to get this all done?
Well, as you know, you're better friends with Chairman Powell at the Fed than I am.
Oh, yes.
And if interest rates stay within the cycle that we see, it's probably a five-to-six-year project. The amenities that are spoken of, we typically go in and you'll see that our largest park is in phase one. We like to build our amenities early so that people can come and see what is actually going to be built rather than what we can show them on paper. So I believe it will be a five-to-six-year project. As I indicated before, there's a lot of the off-site that has been done over the course of the last 12 or 13 years. So our off-site will be waterline connectivity, which is a mile. And sewer is essentially there, so five to six.
And where are you going to start and how are you going to move through?
We will start on the bottom, connect on the north. We've got to have two points of access to be able to go above 30 units, 35 units. And then we will bring the community together. So we will have some single-family, some town home and condominium going immediately. So we have procured the updated easements from UDOT and will begin working on that. When we are able to get approvals on this, then we will work on the commercial portion and perhaps have some connectivity through that as well.
I assume you're going to be selling all that property or are you going to maintain all that?
We have joint ventured on the commercial pieces, maintaining ownership of the property and then looking for individuals that want to own the building, so.
And lease the ground then?
No, joint venture in the building and the land. So we will be involved at some extent. We certainly will be involved selfishly in what the end user is because we need to sell a lot of homes. And if it's an undesirable business, then we are really good at selling a building and then really unsuccessful at selling homes.
Sure.
So we are residential home builders by DNA, but control commercial aspects.
Do you have any design at all for what that commercial area is going to look like?
I have lots of people that would like me to do a design. We are residential and I want to focus on this exclusively and know what we have and then know that we have a certain product type behind us and make sure that we protect vigilantly what we are selling to people. And then we will move in that direction. We have had individuals that run fuel stations. We have had individuals that do retail. And I think at some point Sean and I will sit down and throw out the options and then work towards what we think would be best.
How far, I'm just curious, how far east does that go? Like, it's a little deceiving, obviously.
From Highway 6, what is the depth of the property? Brandon has it at the top of his head, he's our civil.
Just curious. Mm-hmm. I mean, it doesn't really matter, I'm just.
Or acreage count, 60 acres?
60 acres, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's a big space.
Everything is large. So even though this looks really small on a screen.
Yeah.
It's 60 acres.
Yeah.
So I can send you that dimension.
No, it's okay, I can pull it, I can, I don't need to.
Sean, I guess?
No, it's good. I was just curious how, like, how much space.
So if you're driving down Highway 6, when you start to get to the steep, where the mountain's getting really steep on the left, that's the edge of the, of that area. And when you drive out there, it's, it's pretty flat. And then once it really starts to steepen up, that's where you're seeing those contour lines there.
Okay.
So you're still working through the commercial side? You've got a lot of people talking to you, but you don't have a vision? So Mapleton City, I mean, I'm sure you've heard, there's a big outcry or a public opinion on no commercial in Mapleton City. But as residents of Mapleton City, we've got to start thinking of commercial for tax basis. And where this is one of the main key, key areas, correct me if I'm wrong, Sean, for commercial is along Highway 89 and then this piece here. The commercial is very interesting to me because I want you to know what that vision is going there. Is it like Woodbury's property down in Canyon Creek where you've got Walmarts and TJ Maxes and Five Below's? Or is it more of industrial? Just, I think towards the canyon, there's some storage, storage units there. Are we looking for more storage, more industrial, things like that? Or more gas stations, holidays and quick quacks and bricks? We already have one Maverick.
Yeah. There's a prohibition on car washes here, so we won't be doing car washes. That's in the bylaws if I remember correctly. We were approached by a big box. The big box is intriguing to me because then the, the anchor is there and then we have satellite. With a big box and satellite, a fuel station may be an option because the truck count on 6 is monumental. I don't know that I want refrigerator trucks sitting 100 feet from a residential father that's singing lullaby to his baby as the diesel is grinding. So I believe that it will be a retail element more than it will an industrial. And I believe that we will be able to serve.
Hold on one sec, Steve. Do you have anything you want to say before you go, Rich, or ask?
I'm in favor of this. I would like to refine some of the stuff that's going on, but generally I'm in favor, I would vote yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rich.
Thank you.
All right.
When we have the rooftops and there's 1,000 homes here and 4,500 people living within this community, there is going to be a need for neighborhood commercial, which may just be bagel, dry cleaners, walkable. I think we all know that we can't live without a swig. I don't think it's possible anymore. And I think that as, as this evolves and we know what we have, it will be much easier to plug into that module. And even though we have Spanish Fork that has lots of commercial, it's not always convenient to even go and get a gallon of gas. I appreciate the residents. I live in a community that has no commercial either. We are now struggling with tax base. And so now you've got the new gen that's coming in saying, well, we want nicer parks and we want cleaner sidewalks and we want streetlights and we want some sidewalks. I hope that this is an area that people will feel like serves two masters, which is a tax base and also some commercial for the community here. So we will work with staff to be able to bring something back to planning commission in the near future. If you have ideas.
Well.
And you guys are meeting with, I mean this, like, if, if there's not a chamber of commerce that is active, we are open and this is an open canvas for us and would like something that is harmonious and beautiful, but serves a tax purpose as well or a service.
To Sean's point, I'm glad that you thought of removing the original industrial designation because this really is the entryway into the city. And I like the idea of having it be more commercial and retail mix versus large industrial.
Yeah, I'd love to be involved with what you're doing.
Okay.
I have lots of great ideas as to, yeah, making it a great entrance, like they say, and super walkable and super, I think charming and just making our town better than it already is. And, yeah, adding beautification to an area that has not had that, other than the mountain, obviously. But it's kind of had a, we've had a big black eye in that area for a long time. It'll be nice to have it evolve into something very positive.
Highway 6 is interesting on the residential where your adjoining city has moved residents' backyards 12 feet from highway. We have moved residential components away from. And I think it is visually much more appealing, especially as we go up the hill, and moved a lot of that component. So a lot of the vegetation and green space that you see that is untouchable by us will, will be maintained and enhanced. So the commercial, we would hope we're able to do the same thing where we can push things a little bit away unless they're charming and inviting. But something that's a big box, we hope to be able to move away from. And if there's a theme architecturally that we want to work toward here. And if there's a theme architecturally that we want to work toward here, let's do it.
I think that would be great. Yeah.
Can you speak a little bit to the traffic flow? So it looks like you have two outlets onto Highway Six and one onto Highway 89 that will service 990.
Yeah, don't forget, we have connectivity with everything on the community to the.
Coming in and out of the community will probably be through those.
Yeah.
Those two.
And two of them are entered, you enter through the commercial too. Have you guys talked to UDOT and what are the?
We're buddies with UDOT.
Yeah, I'm sure you love them.
Yeah, and we've talked about queuing, and we've done the traffic studies.
Yeah.
And there'll be peak hours where we queue. There'll be periods where nobody's at. Our hope and intention is to make this a community that doesn't have some of the trip counts because of what we've talked about with neighborhood, commercial, walkability, and connectivity. So we meet the needs of the community from an engineering perspective. We hope to enhance that and reduce on what we've talked about with trails and walkability.
I, I think, just one last note before I forget it, is I think, I think it would be good for you to take a look at what, obviously, I'm sure you have already, what Dallas has done in the center of town. We, I think we are kind of an extension of the art city next door. And I think it would be just amazing to integrate that sort of feel along with the rural, small-town feel that we feel like we want to preserve here. And just, I would love to see a lot of art and sculptures and just a mix with old and new, modern, with some more, I don't know, what's the word, historical-type stuff, too. I think it just would be fun to really, I don't know, give that area its own feel and make it really cool and have it just stand out and be a destination. I don't know. You're right at the mouth of the canyon. You're going to have to, we have wind to deal with there, you know? But if you have all these, some other things that are grabbing people, then that, it'll make it really easy to get people there that, you know, that we want here.
On a sidebar, one of the questions that we had was the noise from the windmills. I didn't know that was an issue. I thought I was deaf. We hired an acoustical engineer that went out with Jed, spent a night measuring. We are in the safe zone. But as we read about lawsuits happening across the nation and overseas, there are decibel levels that are put out by windmills.
I did not know that.
And there are thousands of birds that are killed every year by windmills. So the wind, to your point, was one of our considerations. So we feel like we did more due diligence on this piece than I have ever done on any other piece in my career. The wind, interestingly enough, though, if I can brag about this location, as you get off of Highway Six, it is blocked and it is calm. And you can see across the street, the wind blows. And this is going to be a real haven for people that really want to enjoy, I think, some of the most stunning views in Utah overlooking the valley. So it really, in our minds, as we got up there and you get above, is going to be fantastic. This is going to be a great, great place to live.
I assume that this has been, and I don't know if this is more for Sean or not, if it's been looked at just regarding, like, medical service responses. Like, I mean, looking at the southernmost section there, it's a long way away from our current fire station and those types of medical services. Have we looked at that?
Yeah, so the development agreement, they're actually dedicating some property to the city that will be for a satellite location. So.
That's cool.
Yeah, so somewhere in that commercial area, there'll be a parcel that's dedicated to us.
In fact, we wrote in that the Planning Commission will be staffing that on weekends, if I remember correctly. So I don't know what size you are, suspenders.
Yeah, we can make that work.
Yeah.
No, that's good. I think it's important to keep that in mind here because, you know, you look at that right now, and that's a long ways away from our current.
Pretty good response. Yeah, it'd be a long response time.
Yeah. And, I mean, being where these homes are going to be in that area, there's certainly fire, lots of fire danger.
One sidebar, as my older brain kicks in, our total density is 2.15 is the actual effective density when you take the aggregate acreage and divide that by our amount of units. So I think it was referenced as three. We've actually reduced.
Less than three, yeah.
The overall density. So it is, yeah, this would be a great place to raise kids.
I love all the open space. I do worry that we may, I would like you to address something and have it pretty set in stone that we don't have the same thing that happened on the west side of town with a builder that should remain unnamed with open space.
Yeah.
Trying to develop it after it was established as open space.
Yeah, in this case, there's a number of factors that will.
Thank you, Sean. Yeah.
It'd be great to know that it is actually protected and there's a way to, and then there's ways to maintain it and.
This, this is heavily guarded open space and will be by me. And we will, we will not encroach particularly on environmentally sensitive areas, which are now protected for a number of reasons as Sean indicated.
That's good.
This is non-developable, non-irrigatable acreage, so we will not have vegetation. We will not introduce water. We will have dry scape maximum in these areas and maybe do an amenity that is concrete, but nothing with vegetation or backyards.
Is there any way to know if it's going to turn into weeds and just be an eyesore or?
It will be what it is, right?
It's the hillside.
And that's, that's a great, a great thing.
Enhance through wildflowers and enhance through things that we do.
Yeah, that's what I would.
That eventually will take over if we have wet years, and it'll be sparse on years that are dry.
Yeah, if you're, if you're in the flatter part of town, you'd see more concerns about weeds and how it would look. But where this, the majority of it's on the hillside, it'll.
Just look natural.
It'll be a nice, a really nice amenity to have that natural feel.
Sean, can you elaborate a little bit about design standards with planned communities like this?
Yeah, so the state has done a lot of things to take away design criteria from cities. But in this case, they've got an adopt, they've got a set of design standards that they have proposed. So that'll be included in the development agreement, and that's what they'll use to design their.
And you had mentioned the use of hardy scape or hardy plank siding, things. I just don't want a million houses of, or townhouses of stucco.
We have those guidelines. They're, they're in writing.
Yeah.
Will adhere to them.
Okay.
This is probably another topic for the next meeting where you present the actual plats of the subdivisions. But one of the things for planned communities, we had some, a lot of negative is Harvest Park, with the width of the streets and sidewalks only on one side. Hopefully, we don't see that in these high-density areas where you have multi-generational people living in these high-density and the cars are just full of, the streets are full of cars, and you can't even walk kids up and down the sidewalks. You have to use the other side of the sidewalk. So hopefully, on the next time we see you, that we can learn from Harvest Park.
I'm glad you mentioned that because I had that same thought of.
Parking.
We get a redo Harvest Park and do it better this time.
It's beautiful, but it's so crowded.
Yeah, you will see our overflow parking, and we have a stricter standard than what we're held to for that reason. And then permit and tow.
Well, and since you bring that up, Jake, was it Jake? You brought up the architectural, or was that Jesse?
I just had, yeah, I had a question about design.
That is one of my things, and I know Sean gets tired of me talking about this, but it's, if you guys could take into consideration some new looks and some actual different styles instead of the same thing we have seen for so long, it would just be so delightful to my eyes and my, my workday. I know, maybe I'm, I should be off the record at this point, but I am so tired of the same house and the same look and the same neighborhoods everywhere. I would love to see some mid-century plans, some traditional plans, some cottage homes, some, what, I mean, just some contemporary, some whatever, and mix up the elevations and the exteriors. It's just, please, give us something fresh and new and not so cookie cutter out there. I would beg you. We would love to see something new and different, yeah, than these, all these just same.
Think Greece, right? All white, maybe, in a section.
We don't want the Stepford Wives, no. We want, we want actual, I would love to just actually see a custom neighborhood for a change, you know? I know you're a big builder, and I know you have pricing, and I know you have budgets, and you're trying to do the best you can to keep prices down. But anyway, keep that in mind.
Thank you.
It's a big deal to me. And I would like to propose that we make Trader Joe's a must-have in the commercial. Can you make that happen, Steve?
You know, I wanted Smith and Edwards.
Oh, really? Okay, that works, too.
Something for the whole family.
Yeah, that's true. That works. Any other questions?
I think this is a really great project. I like a lot of things about it. I propose that we, I'd make.
We probably ought to, I don't think we ever opened the public.
Yeah, we haven't. It's been kind of.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks, Steve. Thank you. Okay, let's open up the public hearing. Do we have, I know, it's crazy to me that you have one person. You guys are so lucky that this is like out on the outskirts. No one even knows you're coming. Did you intercept all the mail pieces? Maybe there's no one within a mile or how far.
One-mile radius.
It's crazy. Okay, well, we'll close public hearing. All right.
TJ was ready to start a motion, so.
Yeah, I motioned that we approve the plan as put forward in the staff report. And I think it's a great, a great example of the city working with the developer to do something that I think really will benefit our city.
I'll second, and I agree with TJ.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Any, any, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
We actually, why don't we seat?
Oh, yes, I was going to do that. We need to, we need to seat Louis Nettle, since Rich left us.
Yay.
Yay, okay. Any opposed? I don't think we had anyone opposed. Well, congratulations.
Good luck at City Council.
And?
Yeah.
You guys are done?
Yeah.
Yep.
Sean, good job.
You don't want to stay for number five? We don't have.
I know, Jed.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks for coming, all of you.
I'd like to make a motion to double Sean's salary.
Wow.
So moved.
I thought.
I'll second.
I think that's a great example of Sean having an idea of what we're trying to accomplish and just taking all the busy work out of it upfront.
That's a huge.
What a tribute to you.
That's why we don't have anybody here to oppose it.
Honestly, they, they've been, you know, we've, we've had other builders that pushed back. They've been really, really good to say, let's think through, they pushed on really still wanting parks in their project that would be city parks. And that's one thing we just kept saying, we don't want to invest, use city funds on that when we have this park that we want to build here. And that's.
So because that 30 acres is so close to that, that gives us our proximity that we need for the Parks Department for use?
Well, what we didn't want to have is spending all this city money to develop the park and then have to expend all this money to maintain these parks that they were building that we didn't really want. That was, that was one of the big things that we went back and forth on a long time, and they finally said, yeah, this.
I'm sure Logan had a hand in that.
Yeah.
I was going to tease Rich. Man, 2011 sounds like a wild time around here.
That was the Gibby years.
Was that when Harvest Park got approved as well?
They were way back. They were like '04.
They were before '08. They were, yeah, for sure, before the.
Mapleton Village and this one were all about the same time.
To Jake's point, though, when we start talking about plats and roads and things, we do need to get a fine-tooth comb out because we want to make sure we get this one right.
Yep.
Which, this is much, much different than Harvest Park.
Yeah, I know.
Other than the area where the high-density stuff is.
Yeah.
Even that's different than Harvest Park because that's quite a bit more density than Harvest Park.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of the high-density stuff will be private roads. So we'll have one loop road through it, and then the interior stuff most likely will be.
Oh, okay.
So we won't have to maintain it and shovel it or.
Oh.
All of that, so.
And enforce parking.
And enforce, yep.
So I was thinking, he said the amenities will be for everyone? And the HOA will involve all the houses and the high-density, but that's not.
What he was saying is there's not going to be separate HOA for above and below.
It's just one HOA for the whole project. Because there's multiple clubhouses, right? Was there three clubhouse, two clubhouses?
Two pools, two clubhouses.
Oh, there are two. Okay.
Does Nebo own any land down there? They're going to need another school.
That's, I'm assuming that a school will go in. We've talked with Nebo about it. We've talked with them a little bit about it, that that's a real possibility that there would be.
You're going to have to put an LDS stake center there, too.
Go in the commercial area?
The church own any land down there?
Church owns all land. We have one more guest that's probably here for item five, right?
So this is, this is David. He's our new planner.
I was going to say, you can't possibly be waiting through all that.
You're the one from New York?
Yeah.
Ah, nice to meet you.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Kind of a new trend. All the youth in New York are moving to Utah.
Wow.
This is the big draw for FIZZ and.
For FIZZ, you came for FIZZ?
Leave your politics.
He mentioned Swig, but Swig's in Utah, North Utah, Kenny.
That's right.
We're FIZZ.
I know. I actually like Swig cookies better. They took away the good cookies at FIZZ. Not that I eat a lot of cookies now, but.
So one more item?
Yes.
Are we going to get to this one?
Yes, you ready to go, Sean? He actually teared up about you. I am so impressed. I felt like it was in a testimony meeting.
To be honest, I think, you know, when we first started, I mean, you guys know what's going on with my family and that, that was happening right when we started meeting with them. So I think that's probably where that is coming from, so.
That makes sense.
Plus, you are terrific, Sean.
Yeah, well.
I mean, we are so blessed to have you. We really are, so.
Amen.
We all are in agreement. Okay, number five, public hearing. We have a consideration of amendments to Mapleton City Code, Section 18.84.10, regarding requirements for accessory apartments.
Perfect. So as you know, you know, the state legislature is changing things all the time with regards to housing and cities' requirements. When we adopted our Modern Income Housing Plan last year, we had to identify some specific strategies. And one of those was to eliminate impact fees for accessory apartments. And so that's basically what this ordinance or this proposal is, is to eliminate the impact fees. And then there was some, oh, sorry, did you?
I was going to say, Sri, that vindicates you.
Right.
Yes.
Thank you.
But what was nice is because we had it, we could put it in the plan and show that we're taking action to remove it. So that actually been.
Oh, my gosh.
I take that back, Sri.
Yeah. So that's basically it. It's eliminating that. And then there's a couple of requirements in our code right now that have to go away because of state, because of state changes. One is our code has said that if you have an attached accessory unit, it has to be inter-accessible. So you have to be able to go through a hallway or a staircase to get down to the basement or a connection. The state has now said you can no longer require that, so.
I, yeah, I don't know why we ever have that, but yeah.
And then the other is the Sunrise Ranch development that's on the west side. We had not allowed accessory apartments there. The new law, what it says is if you had plats that were approved and platted before a certain time, the city cannot prohibit accessory apartments. So that's basically it.
So there's not going to be a minimum acreage, or does that still stand?
That still stands, yeah. If you want, we're looking at the ordinance. If that's something you want to suggest again to the council on detached accessory apartments, we certainly could.
Is that half acre now?
It's, it's one acre for detached.
So Sean, it looks like the ordinance, though, if it's detached, it limits the size of the unit. But if it's attached, it doesn't seem like there's any limit to the size. So you could divide your house in half and have one be the accessory and the other be.
Yep.
Does the city or does the state dictate that, or?
Yeah, it does. Yeah, it does. It, basically what it says is these are the things you can regulate in attached units and that is not one of them, so.
You really can build a duplex from the beginning.
With, with the, with the requirement that it doesn't have to be inter-accessible. You can have design standards like we do that says it's gotta still look like a single-family dwelling. So you couldn't build, you know, two separate primary entrances and things like that.
That means no two entrances on the front, right? The, the second one had to be from the back or the side.
Yeah, so there's still a little bit of protection.
There is no limit on the size.
And then what, is it twelve hundred square feet for detached?
For one acre to two acre, it's a thousand and from two acres up, it's twelve hundred.
So there's a max.
Uh-huh. And part of the reason, part of the reason for that is that they stay, kind of to address your issue, right? That they stay apartments and they don't become second, second houses. And it would keep, conceivably would keep the rent down a little bit so that it is appealing more to a moderate income family than, than just building a two thousand square foot house and.
What about those tiny houses that?
You could potentially do that, yeah, as a detached.
Yeah, those ADUs, I've seen those.
It'd be pretty good, it'd be a pretty good little model.
Have to have the wheels off for it to count.
They only build one or could they put ten on there?
No, just, you can only have one.
Have one, yeah.
Does it, can it be a mobile structure or does it have to have a foundation?
So there's building code requirements that, that handle that. But yes, it'd have to be permanent.
Because somebody, I've had a couple people ask me recently if they could have an RV be.
Yeah, an accessory apartment.
An accessory apartment or a VRBO or whatever.
Yeah.
It's an Airbnb is what it is.
Airbnb, thank you, thank you. Yep.
What in, oh, we'll deal with that later. That's still tabled, right?
Uh, it's coming, we'll bring it back soon. Yeah, we met with.
After the legislature.
We met with the council, yeah. After this one, I can give you an update on that.
And this is for, does, this is not addressing short-term rentals. This is for long-term rentals.
And so we do still have building permit fees and that sort of thing. You just don't have the.
This is just impact.
Fee for the.
Impact fee.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Or if anyone has anything else.
What's the text on there? Can you go back to that one, Sean, a second? I make a motion that we, so we're recommending approval to the city council for the amendments to Mapleton City Code, Section eighteen dot eighty-four dot four-ten, regarding requirements for accessory apartments.
Second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Okay.
That's it.
That's it.